I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Wolf.
Here.
Councilor Hakes.
Here.
Mayor Montgomery.
Here.
Councilor Strong.
Here.
Councilor Ray.
Here.
And floor is pressed.
Thank you. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to add budget amendment number five as item 5E right after the discussion about nonprofit.
Okay. Any other changes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Katie, did we have anyone signed up for public comment period?
Yes, Josie Cawthorn.
Hi, Josie.
How are you?
Good. If you will please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Josie Cawthorn, 206 Woodford Drive.
Thank you.
So I am here today to discuss potential pedestrian crossing signs on the intersection of East Fork and Guilford Road. I am one of those crazy people you see running in the mornings, sometimes in the dark with a very reflective headlamp. Also with run club on Thursday nights from Pot and Potables. My kids are 10 and 6. They ride their bikes with us sometimes. We've seen families walking almost daily. Cars make a left-hand turn onto East Fork or Guilford Road, or also from Guilford Road onto East Fork, and we're almost smushed. I had a woman the other day try to beat me through the intersection, and I would have lost. So I allowed her to go with my dog. So I was thinking of different ways we could maybe alert people. I don't think any of them are doing it to be aggressive and awful people, but I don't think that there's enough warning that this is a very busy intersection for pedestrians as well as traffic. We've done this whole pedestrian sign out here that lights up is fantastic. I use it all the time with no issue. But I think that when people are taking a right-hand turn from East Fork onto Guilford Road, there is some shrubbery there. There is not a great line of sight. So sometimes kids on bikes who don't think to stop hit the button then cross when they have the crosswalk sign, you know, could be hit. As far as running, we always hit the crosswalk sign. Doesn't matter sometimes. So some of the ideas I had were just some warning signs. Maybe the pedestrian sign, the turning vehicle, the turning vehicles yield to pedestrians, excuse me. And maybe even before the intersection, some warnings to give them a heads up that you are approaching a pretty heavily walked, run, biked intersection. Even a turning traffic must yield to pedestrians to kind of alert, maybe in a brighter yellow than this white. Also, another one just like it, the turning vehicles yield to pedestrians and bicycles. And just some, we had talked to some runners, some walkers, some bikers about some other ideas. One was kind of a delayed green light. So all directions get a red while the crosswalk is in use. And that will give people time to cross before the green light, and they have to think, oh, do I have the right of way? Do they have the right of way? Obviously, the pedestrian always has the right of way, but sometimes when you've worked all day, you're tired. There's a pandemic going on, your brain isn't quite right. You may not pay attention to that. So ways to help drivers understand that there could be a family, there could be a runner, there could be a biker. Something to catch their attention. And maybe work with the church on the corner as far as trimming back tree, there are trees and there is a big beautiful butterfly bush there, that they can have more of a line of sight when people are approaching the intersection as well, were some of the ideas. And of course, not that it's something that can be done right away, but more police presence, just because the speeding has gotten so crazy in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of those that you could leave with the clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Has anyone else signed up? Has anyone else signed up, Katie?
Nobody else signed up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Catherine, if you will come forward.
You're in trouble, Catherine.
We wanted to honor you with the proclamation. You can come a little closer. I'll put my mask on in a minute. Whereas Catherine Stamey Reese has been a resident of the town of Jamestown for almost 30 years, and whereas she has documented the history of the elected officials in the town for over a decade through her artistic talents and photography skills. And whereas she volunteered to serve as a comprehensive plan steering committee member, and whereas the updated comprehensive plan will be used by the planning board to help guide difficult decisions for the next decade. And whereas her love for the town is obvious to everyone around her, and whereas she has been a wonderful resident that has given back to the community in a multitude of ways. Now therefore, I, Lynn Montgomery, Mayor of the town of Jamestown and the town council, do hereby extend our heartfelt appreciation and sincere thanks to Catherine Stamey Reese for her dedication to the citizens of our community, and do extend our best wishes in the next chapter of your life. Thank you so much.
You gotta go back to the picture. You gotta get the picture.
You have to get, you have to turn.
I'll let her go first, so you look at her. Okay. That light is not bad there. But we'll try. Hard to see those beautiful smiles. We're not there, but I know they're there. All right.
Thank you, Catherine. We appreciate you.
Also, thank you for taking, trying to find a good side for me when you took my picture. I don't have, so I appreciate it.
Why do you think she retired?
We were surprised you found it.
Lawrence, I'm gonna get you for that one.
Dave, would you introduce Brandon for us?
One of the things that the mayor and the board approved for this year was to hire an independent third-party group to begin some code enforcement in the area. And so Brandon Emery from Ace Alliance Code Enforcement has begun work in the community. And I wanted him to make a report back to the mayor and the board on what he has done so far and what he may be doing in the future. So let me introduce Brandon Emery. I think most of you already know him, but I wanted him to report back at this meeting in August.
Mayor, Board, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. What I wanted to do was go over the report that I had submitted earlier for your packet. It's dated August 3rd, so we've had a little bit of progress since then. So I'll give you the up-to-date numbers as of today. We've been working about two days a week with the amount of complaints that we've had, the amount of cases that we've been able to do. That's really allowed us to, you know, respond and answer to the complaints pretty much in real time. We've been kind of working first of the week and second part, end of the week, to be able to address all those issues, address a lot, a plethora of cases. So ranging from, you know, the minimum of overgrown lots to minimum housing and everything in between. So far, on your report, we've got eight abated. We've actually had 11 abated as of now. Two of them are listed as unfounded. Those were initially overgrown lots that were probably anywhere from six feet to eight feet tall. The initial conversation, we put them in violation. The initial conversation was they had talked with someone from the town and decided that they were gonna try to get those to go back to undeveloped. But after further talking with them, we, you know, we made them aware of the code, and they went out, cut them with no issue, and then everything is fine. So that area looks dramatically better, and it helps cut down with the wildlife issues that are right next to the road. Some of the others that we've had abated, we've done a lot of zoning violations for a lot of signs with being in proximity to High Point, Greensboro, all those areas. Jamestown tends to be a hotspot for just random signs being put up. So at the time of the report, we had picked up 19. As of right now, we've picked up 47. So we're, you know, today, we haven't picked up a whole lot because of all the rain, but every time we see them, we try to pick the ones up that are those signs that aren't beneficial to anyone, but are just, you know, free advertisement. Some of the other cases that we've been able to abate, we've got a lot of junk vehicles and junk property already cleaned up. One of the, one of the top cases that I'm really happy with is over on the far end. Technically, it's called Adnan Lane. There were a lot of accumulation of vehicles, junk, open storage over in that area. The property owners have been completely responsive to us. It's been a great meetings that we've had with them, and they have reduced greatly the amount of open storage that they have there. They're continuing to work on all those projects that they've got to get it cleaned up. On your report, you'll notice we've got it listed as kind of red, green, and blue on there. And in the middle, we've got just some letters to show MH is minimum housing, OL is overgrown lot. We've got an answer key on that second page, just in case you're not sure what they stand for. We have dealt with quite a few complaints. Again, like I said, what I've tried to do personally is reach out to every complainant, have a conversation with them, get an idea, and establish a good relationship, so that way they can reach out directly to us and talk to us. We spoke with almost every property owner, with the exception of just a couple. At this point, we've opened cases on. We've had people from, property owners from Chicago, Illinois, reach out and talk to us because we're shaking the tree hard enough. We have gotten 30 cases open thus far. Eight are going to hearings. We prepared eight notice of hearings today and are getting those mailed out. So that's indicative that out of those 30 cases that we've opened, 22 of them are either already abated or are very close in the process of being abated. When you look down at the breakdown, the information you've got, we've dealt with, and these are the August 3rd numbers. We dealt with six minimum housing, 12 junk pile, 12 junk vehicle, 12 overgrown lot, five zoning violations, two animal complaints, and one abandoned white goods. So we've got, based off of these numbers, it's higher now. We've got a 22% abatement rate based off of what we've done. Seven unfounded, so that's gonna go into the abatement rate. And then when you look at our open, we've got it broken down into two categories. We've got it broken down into new or no progress. So most of these are gonna be new cases, just because we've just recently opened them up. But as we go on, you'll be able to determine between what is new and in progress, meaning we've been in contact, there's an active plan to bring it to abatement and to be able to bring it into compliance. And then others are, you know, we've not had any response to it, or they're brand new, and it's certainly, we haven't had any contact with them. But that's where we are. Our plan is to continue addressing whatever issues arise. We've had some kind of spur-of-the-moment issues coming up with a project with the town to paint, put some paint on the road, and some vehicles blocking the way. So we're able to work hard on that, get that taken care of and get it out of the way, so we didn't have to tell anything, we didn't have to move anything. And just dealing with the problems and the issues as they arise and as they come in, working closely with Matt and Anna to ensure that what we're doing reflects the goals of the town and what everybody's wanting to accomplish. So if you guys have any questions, I'd love to address those now.
Well, I wondered, when you pick up the signs, we used to bring the signs up here, and then the people could pick their signs up.
Right.
If they wanted to, sometimes they didn't. But is that what you're still doing?
Usually, with most of the signs, no, because a lot of them are in pretty rough shape anyway. But with kind of the advent of COVID and everything going on and the issues with the contact, we've been pulling them. Most of them are close to the road in the right of way. So when you look at those, most of those are advertisements and are just looked at as kind of abandoned property. If it's something that is a personal sign for someone, if it's something that, you know, is real estate, I mean, we're not pulling up real estate signs, but if, for instance, if somebody's advertising something for it, something that's a local thing, we will try to make contact with everybody, give them ample opportunity to bring those back. But if it's just the generic, we buy houses.
Right.
You know, that's going in the trash when we get done with it.
What's been the, excuse me, what's been the biggest challenge you've run into as far as, you know, driving the abatement rate one way or the other?
I'm sorry, fit, I said the last part again.
The abatement rate, what's been your biggest challenge to, in terms of getting your job?
Realistically, nothing so far. We've had a few properties where the owners do not live locally, and they've just been in that condition for an extended period of time. So they're just used to not doing any maintenance on that. But we've had some that we've opened up. For instance, we've got a lot of properties, cases opened up in that Kearns Robbins Avenue circle. And at this point, every case that I've opened up, it's either been abated already, or I've been in direct contact with every property owner, and they're actively working to abate. This includes the house, the trees are as tall as the house is with two junk vehicles on there. We had one, I think, in the previous presentation I had. It was that pink or that purple house that had grass that was over six feet tall. It's been cut. I've been talking to them. They're actively working to remove the vehicle, to do the work, same thing on the property next door. So one of the, one of the properties that we had that the owner hadn't responded initially is actually a Chicago address. They reached out to us today. So that's something that we haven't had any progress moving on up to this point, but we have as of today. So really, the only thing that we need to increase the abatement rate is just time. It's gonna be adding more cases on to it. But with opening up 30 cases thus far, and only eight of them go on notice of hearing, that's a really good number to be at. Most of the individuals that we have dealt with have been exceptional. I wish every town we worked in was as good as Jamestown when it comes to the residents that we've dealt with, because most of them have been extremely positive. You know, you have your few everywhere, but for the most part, everybody's been responsive to us. They've been understanding. We've tried to explain to them and not just tell them what they're doing wrong, but also educate them on what the ordinance is. So it's something that we don't see a reoccurring issue down the road.
Have you had sufficient support to do your job?
Yes, sir, we have. We have. Anything that we have needed, you know, Mr. Trine, Matt, Anna, everybody has been on the ball with getting us whatever we need. We've had space to work out of. We've got, you know, anything with mailings, anything with whatever we needed. It's been extremely supportive of us doing our job.
We have a great group, so let's get to it.
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can definitely notice a difference. I mean, you know, I wasn't even thinking of you working here and driving through town. There have been a couple times that I've circled back, you know, and driven past a street again, and I'm like, oh, that's why, it's because Brandon's been here. And I think that even ones that, you know, aren't on the list, I don't know if it's, you know, if these have popped up in the interim or what, but, you know, it does seem like maybe people are seeing the efforts go, or maybe they've read about it or heard about it, and, you know, are kind of proactively doing some. I know there have definitely been some areas where I feel like, for years, I've seen sort of the same thing, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, this looks great. This is a good-looking yard, a good-looking house here.
One of the big things that we try to do is make our presence known. So for instance, you know, we were in the neighborhood around Yorkley earlier today several times. And, you know, every time we're out, you see a neighbor popping up because they see my vehicle coming out. So we try our best to, you know, to wave and have a conversation with everybody, let them know who we are, let them know what we're doing. And it's almost the same thing as having kind of a saturation patrol with law enforcement. You know, they see them there, they see them actively working, and they think, you know, it's like when a cop pulls in behind you, like, oh, no, what am I doing? What am I doing wrong? Not speeding, you're not doing anything, but you automatically check yourself. Well, it's the same thing with having code enforcement, and them knowing that we're proactive in it and not just reactive to as things come in. So it's that butterfly effect. It's gonna continue to go on and on and get better and better.
It's a good thing to have you here and not have our town planner out trying to coordinate this stuff on top of everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Dave, would you update us on the agreement with Guilford County concerning the Jamestown Library?
Yes, and I wanted to say that just starting off, we're at 22%, but I would think over time, you're gonna see that percentage to be very high in closing, but you've got to start. And I think the reporting and the record-keeping, I think, will allow the mayor and the board to evaluate the effectiveness of these services. And maybe after three or four months, we'll sit down and stop and, you know, see how we're doing and make sure that what we're doing is effective in meeting your expectations. And I think that you probably will find that it would. The other thing that we presented at the last meeting is the agreement, the interlocal agreement for funding of the library. And of course, this is a five-year agreement and was updated. And we have a payment of $55,500 from the county that goes to the library. I would say that we did review these with our town attorney. We found some changes. And then after we had finished, Ms. Martha found an additional change or two. But we are going to hopefully approve this tonight and send it back to the county. Matt has been in touch with the assistant county manager. We have made a few changes from what we received, but I think it only clarifies what it is and makes it a little bit clearer and updates it from times in the past when things have slightly changed. And so we recommend that the mayor and town council approve the interlocal agreement amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
The next one that we have is the agreement on animal shelter and control services. And the last one, we received money for $55,500. And this one, we pay out money of $12,265 for the county to provide that service to us. And actually, our assistant town manager and myself and town attorney were on the phone, and we went through this and found, again, a lot of things that perhaps needed to be changed and updated that really didn't change the overall impact, but helped clarify over agreements that have been drawn in the past and perhaps haven't been really updated to the extent that we have. And again, Matt has been in contact with the assistant county manager, and we will send these back to them if they feel like they can sign them good. And if not, I'm sure they'll probably run it back through and have the county commissioners look at it on a later agenda. But everybody has worked together to get this done. And so we request that the mayor and town council approve the interlocal agreement for animal shelter and control services.
Quick question. Is there a way that we can get the animal services to come and give us a presentation or some kind of numbers?
That's one of the things that is in the report, is that they would provide us information, maybe on a monthly and quarterly basis. And you kind of read my mind. I thought it might be appropriate, as we finish, maybe in October, to maybe let them know that we would like them to come down, maybe introduce themselves and share the report with us on the activity within the town. I don't think we have done that, and maybe over time, they haven't been providing us that information. And when we read the agreement, I felt like it would be good, just like we do for the Pine Cross Sedgefield and just like we do for the sheriff's office, if they would come and share with us. And I think it might be good for the citizens to see the folks that are out there providing this service for us, you know, much like Brandon and the sheriff and Pine Cross Sedgefield, and introduce them to the board and maybe have that information as a regular part of our report. I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I had asked that too, Lawrence, because it states in here, you know, they're to give us that report. And it used to be, before the latest website, we had a link that citizens could go to and see what calls were in Jamestown for each month. So, and Matt said he would follow up with them too, that we could get that report.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dave. Judy, would you give us the presentation on the Jamestown Historic Society and funding for their services?
Before the last council meeting, we had received a request from the Historic Society to contract with them for historical services. And they had requested an amount of $14,150. Well, this was more than we had in the budget for that purpose. So I asked Sean to give us some priorities as far as, you know, the different requests. And he did that. We didn't get it before the last council meeting, but we got that. And so kind of got a revised request. The current amount of budget is $10,500 that was approved as part of the budget. So of that amount, they're requesting $7,000 for marketing and visitor service campaign, $1,500 for shelving for history resource texts and historic texts, humidity control and monitoring, a request of $650. And display cases, they had requested more, but the budget allows $1,350. So that's what the request is for that. So we would recommend that you approve the total, $10,500, broken down as requested for these specific items. If you have any questions, we're glad to try to answer.
This is not really a question, but I had, was looking over this on the project proposals that you had them do in priority. The marketing and the visitor service campaign, it talks about historic resources point maps. And I thought, I asked, and Anna had met with them, I believe, if the historic markers that we have, if they could be included on that map. And Anna thought that they were receptive to that, I think. So that would be a good way, as a starting point of that walking tour we had talked about forever. But have those pointed on their maps as well.
That's a good call out.
Good idea. Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Dave, would you review budget amendment number five with us?
We're going, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it, I was talking a little bit early with Councilmember Rayburn, and she said, does all this happen on the day of the meeting? And I said, it seems to. I know I had an earlier budget amendment addition, and then we had a change to it. And then found out at about 1:00, I could take it off because we got a better solution from our staff that was agreed to. And we thought things were pretty wrapped up. And then at 5:00, in walks Paul. And so one of the projects that I know you're familiar with is the capital project fund for the East Main Street sidewalk. And this has to do with the railroad, and perhaps we've been working on this five or six years and maybe have been talking about it for a lot of time before that. But we are down to 300 feet of pipe and about 200 feet of sidewalk. And the railroad is going to require that we provide an inspector for that project to make sure that it does not encroach on their road and it... and that it is put in properly and performs its function well. And we have, Paul has been in contact and even received a message this afternoon right at 5: that we certainly believe that there is an excellent possibility that we will receive a supplemental agreement from NCDO2T in the amount of $22,500, which would cover the cost of that expenditure. So, with your permission, we are requesting that the mayor and the board approve budget amendment number five in the amount of $22,500 on the East Main Street sidewalk project, which would provide an inspector.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Dave, while you're at the podium, would you go over the details of how the town staff was able to solve our earlier budget amendment? And save $8,000?
Yes, we have a, I don't necessarily always like budget amendments this early in the year, but occasionally we have them. We had a Jacobson mower, and we have it leased. And we, it's a three-wheel mower, two front wheels and a rear wheel mower, wheel. And it's probably a 40-something thousand-dollar piece of equipment. And what we found out is that the motor for the rear wheel was not working and the machine was not working. We found out that the cost of the motor was somewhat less than $10,000. And it's a leased piece of equipment. And our staff was convinced that we could take that apart and make it, you know, not use that third wheel and have it to be a two-wheel drive vehicle. The people from Jacobson were having a little difficulty with that. And then they came back and said, you know, that's a good idea. And so, rather than nearly $10,000, we came back, I think, with $1,724, most of that being sales tax that we'll get back. So, I appreciate our Jamie Claybrook, our golf course superintendent, and Justin King, our mechanic, for standing in there and standing firm. And so, I think, rather than have that be a budget amendment, we have that money early in the year in our maintenance budget. So, it just seemed crazy for us. You have to replace an electric motor for a third wheel for $10,000 when we could handle it a little bit better, especially on a, say, a $45,000 piece of equipment. And we didn't want to buy a new piece right now. So, as it turned out, that reasonable maintenance and a solution recommended by our staff and approved by the group that's going to be doing it from Jacobson. And they're going to come and do the work so that if there's any impact on the other electrical, they'll be responsible for it and not us.
Excellent.
Well, so done.
You know, we, I think we have a great staff across the board. And so, we're, you know, very pleased. And these are some of the kind of things that happen that we don't normally even talk about. But I was, had to congratulate the staff for excellent work.
Yes.
That would also mean that our terrain is not so treacherous that a third motor is needed. So, that's good stuff.
And in terms of the manager's report, which follows, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but we did have our candidate information session. And I'd actually got some good reports back from one or two of the candidates and even from some of y'all who are candidates as well. And one of the things the board has been interested in is what I would call, we're calling Operations Continuity Plan. We're a small workforce, and when somebody is out, and I would report that Ross Sanderlin will probably be back the end of this month. I know Marcy, for one, would be glad to have him back. Cindy may be coming back shortly after that. And Scott is back, Scott Coakley is back. So, you know, what do we do when people are out? I can't afford to have people, extra people in the sidelines, but we have to provide, you know, people to be able to do the job when folks are out. And so, we'll begin that particular plan. I think we'll get back probably at the next meeting with the results of our mission, vision, and values. From Warren, I actually, you know, have that information that he's developed and to give back the results of our work. And that was a goal that the board had. And I think y'all did an excellent job of clarifying that and making it a little bit better. We also had our partners in who provide services to our community. We're doing a strategic growth plan and trying to have the impact of a large development, say, Johnson Farm, on our town staff. And so, we had those folks in. And one of the questions came up at our joint, at our, one of our meetings, you know, and what about the schools? Well, we invited the schools to be with us. They were not able to come at the last minute, but we're going to share our information with them on the future growth and development of our community and what that might mean in terms of additional students. And certainly, some of the large projects that we're working on, that might have a seven-to-10-year build-out. And I think it's our job to provide these estimates to them so that they could put that in their capital budget and begin to plan for the schools. And y'all also know, we have a joint study with the Pine Cross Sedgefield Fire Department in terms of the location of a new station, and that should be done fairly quickly. We're also working on a study for garbage, waste pickup, and recycling on some recommendations that might help the town out in the future. We've been in contact with Water and Wastewater, High Point, Greensboro, the partnership. And so, we're gathering this information for the mayor and the board that y'all would be able to make best decisions for the community in that sort of a parallel move to the joint meeting that we had with the planning board, which I thought went very well. Certainly, we had presentations from our town attorney. We had presentations from Seth Harry, from Seth Harry and Associates, who is going to be the town's advocate in this process. He's an architect with experience in urban design, who has worked both on the private and the public side to develop large sites like the one he's working for. And we look forward to the public process on September the 14th through the 19th to involve the public in helping us to figure out what type of development we would like to see. And that is going to end up in a development agreement that is going to hold the developer accountable for producing, you know, those kind of things that we would like to see here in our community. And so, this is going to be driven by that input. It'll go to the planning board. And ultimately, the mayor and the town council will have a responsibility for approving something that you think is beneficial to our community in terms of short and long-range growth.
Dave, on that public engagement workshop, tentatively, September 14th through the 18th, have you established a time for that yet?
We are meeting on Thursday to establish the time limit. And we're coming up with a communication plan on how we reach people. We're a little, you know, with the COVID kind of issues coming back up, we'll try to see if we can come up with something that can accommodate as many persons as possible. And so, I think Thursday, Matthew and I and Anna will be meeting with Seth Harry. We've also had communications back with D.R. Horton. And so, we continue to, you know, push that forward. And it won't be long before we will be out with notifications and communication to the public. And we will try to coordinate that with the town council and with the planning board. We continue to work with Ramsey, Bergen, and Smith on the new recreation maintenance facility. And as we progress with that, I may well hold a briefing at some point for the board to review that and a few other things that I might need to share, you know, with y'all. I know I catch you as I can. Occasionally, I try to brief you on the things that are happening in between our monthly meetings. There's a lot going on. And so, that is pretty much my report. And we appreciate, as always, the support from the mayor and the board. And I know I call y'all on the phone regularly. I send out emails. And sometimes I have to send out emails after the email wrecking information that I sent because things have changed. So, I do, I think the staff and I try our best to keep you informed. And if I'm over-informing, you please let me know.
You're doing great.
But I feel like the best elected officials are the best informed elected officials. And it's our goal to make sure that you know what it is that we're doing. We're still operating off of your strategic plan. And we have a color-coding system like Brandon. And I think periodically, you'll be able to evaluate the effectiveness of your staff on how well we're accomplishing the outcomes and goals and strategies that we approved for our FY '21-'22 budget. Thank you.
I apologize for not answering today, but I was hanging off the side of the house.
It's a good reason.
Felt that was a little more important than holding on.
It's a really good reason.
You left a detailed message, and I was good with it.
We're going to get you a lavalier.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Counsel, do we have any committee reports?
Well, it's not necessarily a committee report, but Paul Blanchard and I did take Wright Archer around a tour of the town on July the 22nd. And we're actually, he was here for three hours. We met with him, and then we toured the town. And Paul, is Paul?
He's there.
I can't see you, okay.
Other side of the lecture.
Once I get through, if there's more you want to say, because, but this is a list of Paul had created. And then you'll see my scribbling on here, some of the things that I brought up. But I just wanted y'all to have a copy of what we went through.
Thank you.
But, and I'm going to give the town clerk a copy too. So, if a mayor or a council candidate would like a copy, they could get one from the clerk. But it was a great meeting, I thought. And he was very receptive to our projects and our comments. And he seemed very interested in keeping into communication with Jamestown and his office. We did drive him around the, I guess formerly known as the Johnson property. I'm not sure how to say that now because the Johnsons don't own it. But we just wanted to inform him of this development that will happen at some point so that DOT could be involved in the beginning instead about the end. He seemed to appreciate that. And, you know, I hate that Ms. Cochran left because one of the things that we talked to him about and we went and looked at was exactly the place she was talking about. And Paul and I talked about it after that. Definitely need to trim those bushes there because I walk there too. And you talked to Wright about a timing issue. So, we're aware, but now we, so we definitely need to move that on. I don't know, is that bush, the church's bush? That first one?
It's very near the right-of-way line. It's right on the edge.
That one really does need to be trimmed because you cannot see around that, the vehicle or the pedestrian, and then the other time. But then also, Wright was going to meet his wife at full moon and have dinner. So, we spent the afternoon and the evening in Jamestown. And I just thought he was, seemed to be really receptive to anything we, and in communication, he said he would even be okay with meeting once a month, not necessarily in person, but however. So, I thought those are all positive things.
Oh, yes.
Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
After that meeting, which it was a great meeting to show him these places and just got him oriented with what the challenges are and some future projects, I did email him following up, and he said he was aware of it. I responded back and I think checked in again. And he's disseminated some of the information to staff because some of it's traffic control, some is more about maintenance. So, we're waiting on answers for, I think, five of them or so. About half of them are a little more urgent, others are planning. But we wanted him to be aware of upcoming projects in Jamestown and keep us on the radar.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
It's good, there's good dialogue.
Yes.
It's open.
And, you know, he'd be a new district engineer, get that communication, that relationship going. The next TAC meeting is next Tuesday, so there's nothing to report there. And the land comp update steering committee, there's still to be decided when the next meeting is. I think Vaughn is still working on that date.
Okay. Thank you, Martha.
Uh-huh.
Easy to report.
Nothing from the Parks and Rec.
And I'm looking up to make sure I have the date right. But we did have the joint council and planning board meeting, which Dave went over, and we were in attendance, so that was good. And then the next AARP meeting, I believe it is September 8th at 4:00 here. So, but didn't have one this month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, did we have anyone signed up for public comment period?
Nobody signed up.
Okay, thank you. Any other business to address, counsel?
I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to thank Matt and Anna and Scott and Austin for the National Night Out event. I thought it was great because the weather was wonderful.
Yeah.
And I gotten a lot of really nice compliments that people really enjoyed it. And the band that played was perfect for that event. You know, you could talk, but yet you could hear the band back there. So, it was really, and to see all the law enforcement officers that showed up was really great.
They liked Jamestown.
Been involved with that system for, since its inception, and I've never seen that many law enforcement workers.
I know, it was great.
Especially with free donuts or something.
Well, yeah, it was great, yeah. I really enjoyed that.
They liked Jamestown, that's good.
And the highway patrol was there?
Yeah.
Also Pine Cross Sedgefield?
Yeah, well, yeah, the fire department was there. I guess I was just going to remind, you know, that we have the music event at Ren Miller September the 3rd. So, that's coming up real quick. And of course, Chick-fil-A opening tomorrow, weather permitted. I guess they're going to do it, but that's awesome. But I did have a question. I had a couple of ladies stop me. They evidently, they like to go to the clubhouse, to the grill on Sunday after church for lunch. And I guess it hasn't been open the last few Sundays they tried to go. Of course, I told them there were some staffing issues there because I knew Cindy was out. But I was just wanting to make sure that that is on our plan for it to be open Sunday at lunch. Because on the website, it's saying it's open Sunday.
Again, when we, when we talk about operations continuity, we have our grill master and our chief cook and bottle lusher who is out. And we have someone filling in, and they aren't able to work on the weekends. But we hope that she will be coming back with Ross soon, and we will have our normal schedule. And perhaps it would be good for us to advertise that, or at least let people know, you know, when it's open and when it's not. And so, we'll go ahead and do that. But we've had a, the golf course has, you know, been challenged, if you will, when we have our golf pro and our, but it so happened, we did have a person with food service skills who has been out there. And we've, I've received some compliments on her and her smile and how she's filled in. But she's just not able to work on the weekends as well. So, we'll try to fill that up when Cindy gets back. And we hope that she'll be back maybe by the end of this month or early next month.
It's just not a deep bench, is it? I said, it's not a deep bench, is it?
The bench is not deep. That's why I'm here. I was on the very end of the bench.
And you'll be at the grill on Tuesdays and Thursdays? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, they do miss Cindy, that's for sure. That was all that I have.
Any other?
No.
Business we'd like to address? Judge Jordan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.